Everybody, I'd just like to call the committee of the whole Tuesday, January 21st, 2020 to order. I'd like to start by saying that we're pleased to be here today on the traditional territory of Treaty Six. We acknowledge all those who share a deep connection with this land. The city of Beaumont respects the histories, languages, and cultures of all Canada's first peoples, whether they be of First Nation, Métis, or Inuit descent, and appreciates that their presence continues to enrich Canada's vibrant communities. We are all Treaty people, the peace treaties bind us all. Thank you. So, called meeting to order, just ask if there's any modifications to the agenda. Administration? Okay, that moves us quickly on to item number three tonight, which is presentations and delegations. And it looks like we'd like to welcome Baha Minor Hockey Association representatives to provide a presentation to us tonight. "Baha Minor Hockey Outdoor Rink Project Presentation" is the title in front of me here. So, I'd like to welcome, maybe just quick introductions from yourselves.
Dylan, I'm the manager director for Baha.
Perfect. Kevin, I'm the office director for Baha.
Hi, my name is Brian Tensoni, I'm the president of Baha.
Perfect, welcome, and thanks for coming tonight. And I understand that you guys have a presentation, is it going to be pulled up?
We don't have a power presentation.
You don't have a power presentation, just purple tonight?
Yes.
Okay, sounds good. Walt, take her away.
Okay, so, we have been talking with Mayor Stewart for a little while about potentially having the opportunity to help fund an outdoor rink for the community. We'd like to, we are committed up to a point of financially up to $150,000 to put towards the project. That's our maximum that we can put towards it. We would like that to include the NHL-sized rink, the concrete pad, full board package, benches, end chain link around the rink, lights and equipment for, again, for during the summer and spring where the rink can be used for ball hockey, or inline, or basketball, other kinds of events for the community as well. Moving forward with that, we would like to request if the city were able to manage the project and also pay for the remainder of the project as well. Once the project was completed, there were a number of things that we were told, were asked about. How would it be maintained? We understand that the city would maintain it. We would like to have the community be have access to this rink as well, so there's a way we could have the ability to book times for the community as well as using it for some of the Baha rosters during the winter season. There were some examples that Dylan had brought through, like, for instance, there are droughts being used with the city booking the areas, for the booking the area for organizations to use, groups to use the rink as well. Now, there is opportunity for board advertising, so that are other donations, and the suggestion was that we put that forward towards having a repair and enhancement fund, so to may help maintain the rink. We also were talking about having a reserve fund as well to also provide the opportunity to fulfill that. At this point, I wanted to ask, are there any questions for us? We'll take a bit of a break.
Yeah, sounds good, thank you for the information. We'll present any questions from council and the presenters.
Yeah, question, just on the standard.
Yes.
Mainly on the boards, how far do you want to go with the standard for the boards? Are you looking at puckboard? Or just, they're similar to what we've got in...
Yeah, it would be very similar to having, we have in the indoor rings, so puckboard.
Okay, so, with my hand up, I have been involved with, with Burns, or Conwy, with the outdoor rink facility. They thought over time was that the chain link fence had, yeah, chain link fence like 10 feet, about it.
Right.
That there was absolutely no access after hours without some supervision because the puckboard got torched.
Right.
Yeah, because it melts. Lots of metal, the UV attacked it also, so there was some issues with the sun and other things over time.
Right, sure.
So, maybe we just got to look at what's entered towards the boards physically built.
I know Ardrausen has a different setup, so they're not using puckboard. It looks different. The arc outdoor rink, it's an NHL-sized rink, the same, the same dimensions that we would like, but the board package is different. I could certainly send you pictures of what it looks like, I have pictures of that rink in the future, I could send them over and find out what it actually is.
If you happen to do that, I think we should just somewhat...
Yeah, of course, absolutely, that's a good point, that's something I didn't know. Yeah, we did not, didn't know that.
So, they put a 10-foot chain link around their facility?
Yeah, that's right.
And a gate, physical door to get in.
Okay, good. Councilor McCallas?
Yeah, thanks for coming to the presentation. First, a question, maybe I'll throw you off a bit, but I guess, why do you think that Baha should be committing these funds to this? I think, you know, it's great that you guys have done a lot of fundraising and all that sort of stuff. I'm just curious on, you know, booking recreation facilities, all that sort of stuff, is, you know, should be the mandate of the city to provide? Is it, where did this come from? Is it the fact that you don't have it, and it's not going to, just curious on some past you guys, obviously you've been trying to get things built, we've got a new, a new Rix in, that must have obviously been an NHL-sized rink, I'm sure it's going to help you guys. So, you know, it's great for coming forward with this, I'm just curious as to why it's coming to this step and the process there.
Well, I guess it's, I keep calling it a legacy project, because we've had from past boards, like, we're talking players and families who've since left our association and everything. We've had that GFCs kind of popping up, and we went back to past presidents, and I probably bear you, we're having part of it as well, is the, it was, money fundraised for a boss, and it just never happened. It just didn't, it wasn't feasible, and so there was like, well, and it just kept flipping over, flipping over, and now board to board to board, it just keeps flipping over, kind of thing. So, anyway, we're just looking for a project that we can, you know, put our stamp on. I keep using the word legacy project, that we can, you know, I was playing hockey myself, and I grew up playing hockey here in Beaumont at the Bellevue Arena, so I could benefit out of it, even though I'm not, I'm just not playing currently in the minor hockey system. So, you know, and I just, I just see it like, you know, when it's initially got talked about in an equal location, I just, I think we're all aware of the fact that if we could put something, if we can help out putting that arena on the same parking lot as two existing arenas, on that, where those portals were for this school, and all the schools in full support, I talked to both their administrators, knowing that, wow, they could have the use of this during a school day, or their phys ed classes and things like this, and, you know, it's, and then having the Zamboni made access to it, but I guess that's kind of...
Yeah, I'm kind of drifting off your question here.
No, it's a good...
But it's, it's kind of like one of those projects, like, and we find where passport papers go sit in the stands, or sit in the crowd at our MGM, they're always asking, well, what about that money? What about that money? Well, we all know about that money, it just, we haven't really been able to find a really solid project that we can put it toward. So, you know, putting our contribution to this, and I know we've talked with Paul in a couple, a few meetings, and we, you know, we want to have some, like, say, of how it's used for one, and primarily, but attention to that, but also like, future expansion, like, I can obviously have association double in the next 10 years, so if we know, if we have two dressing rooms, like, as the first set of it, but the opportunity to add along the, maybe, our storage rooms, or maybe a board office for, for association, and, you know, as well, you know, the reserve funds and all this stuff can be discussed as far as, you know, making, allowing for this to be some expansion on the side, or add more rooms, or something like that, where it's not taking away from the, taking it to build. No, I really appreciate the answer, if I just carry on here. You can imagine most people come and say, hey, can you do this for us? And certainly don't bring any cash with them. So, I'm just curious on that piece. In terms of location, sorry, you talked about this, I just got the map up here, we don't have it up here that you can see, but I assume it's kind of in this, kind of, this is where you're talking about, yeah, in this, in this area here, is that?
Yes, yes.
Sorry, for those who can't really see, probably passed around a map, but, and so you said, you mentioned that you spoke with J E there, and there onboard, get what it sounds like, yeah? Okay, great. And the other question I had was from a, we've had a bunch of retreats, just workshop over the last weekend here, where, you know, we discussed making projects, including upgrading the Bellevue Rink, obviously that needs a little bit of care, yeah? And so, we've got to go through a whole consultation process, but I think council signaled pretty strongly that we want to make sure we've got a really strong objection in recreation, and obviously outdoor rinks, and you mentioned the fact that the usage is not just in the winter, right, and being able to do it in summer. So, I guess the crux of it is, you know, if you guys are putting in significant capital, you're going to want to have a sense of, of, or a triple booking, or you've got maybe somewhere sort of, I'm not sure, have you thought about how that might work? You know, talk about a booking system, but is it going to be turned over straight over to Beaumont, and then we just figure it out, or does Baha want, you know, specific time slots that they can for their practices games? Do you guys thought that?
Like, ultimately, you're dealing with the elements, so like, to date, with the first day, you could really use it in a while. And I think, we don't really know ourselves, what kind of, what it would, what it would look like. Is it going to take the place of the ice we're using already? I don't think so, but to have some chunks, or times where we have the opportunity to use it, but when we're not using it, we're not taking the prime times either, like, letting the community use it as well.
Yeah, I guess my point is, I think you get to a point where you guys kick in, and we kick in, and ultimately, you're not happy, like, well, we, we thought we would get this out of it, right? So, obviously, we need to, rarely have, that would have to be ironed out, yeah, for sure.
Thanks, Councilor Dowler.
Thank you. Councilor McCallas, we answered too many questions already, so I won't go down the path at all, but one question I do have is, the land that the proposed rink is going on, is that city property, or is this school board property? Is it a combination of the two? Depending on the size of the rink, does it cross any, any boundaries? I know we're putting it, when you have the Ken Nichol towards the backside where the portals are, I get that, I'm not too sure that line between city property and school board property, does it cross both?
It's entirely on city property.
Okay. And having said that, then, is there enough space for NHL-sized rink there, on city property, as far as we know from, at this point?
As far as I know, there is, like, I think, I think, I'm not official on this, but it's like, schools only like 30 feet past their edge of their building, so it's definitely on city, just pulling up the picture. Definitely, and definitely there's enough space, there is enough space for the life size of 200 feet, minimum, right?
You're just trying to find your actually, wouldn't mind seeing what you were looking at, Sam, and get a feel for it. I've driven by the numerous times, thinking, it's sometimes hard to visualize how big a rink it has to be.
Oh, for sure.
But the Rix standard looks small, and now it looks huge.
Yeah.
You know, once the walls go up, the roof goes up, it looks much bigger than it...
To be honest with you, ideally, you'd like to see it go north-south.
Right.
Not like some people would find the soccer field, like, you'd still like to leave green space for as much as possible there.
Okay. Yeah, so if it's all in city property, that gives us, our agreement, more of a flexibility to be between two parties, not having a third party, I mean, if they're...
Wow, that's cool. That's a big rink. That's quite a trip.
Yeah. We're getting there.
Yeah, the bottom left there is a satellite, if you click that. Yep.
Do we lose this on the field?
Because we have the next question, and can we defer to anything else? Or can they?
Well, John, you've done better than us, the, the, the last few years, that's our field hasn't been used as a soccer field, it's been used, football has done some junior camps and stuff on there, as far as I understand, but soccer...
Soccer, like, you can use it as a practice field, but this, for the size of the field that it was, the nets were the wrong size, so it can't be used for games. So, you could put, you could put a rink on there, and the green space would still be available for use for soccer practice, and it'd be fine.
You're getting pretty close there, if you could drag it where it says Beaumont in the middle there, if you could drag that down, and then zoom in on the, where it says Ken Nichol. Yeah, so zoom Nichol down a bit. You can drag it forward, Mike.
Walt, if you can find that map, Dylan, if you don't mind. You mentioned in your comments too about possible change rooms. Are you referring to the Ken Nichol itself, and expanding change rooms on the outside of the building, and that's as an addition? That's from sort of visual, with what you're seeing, are you looking at change rooms attached to the rink?
I think we're looking, I think we're looking at something that Bellevue has, something like that.
Yeah, like a shelter sort of thing.
Yeah, like a shelter, yeah.
Yeah, okay.
But, you know...
That's what I was assuming you meant, yeah.
Yeah, that being said, you know, as we discuss the process, whatever, you mentioned Ardrausen, they use the indoor facility that they have existed already, and they kind of have a little path to skate out to, or a path to walk out to, which is, you know, also definitely an option as well.
I do think it's great that you guys are coming, you know...
We just like the location, sort of, I think we've talked, like, the location, just, it just makes sense, with the, like, the two facilities being maintained right there, and the Zamboni right there as well. It just, it seems like it could be a, and it's a center of town, quite the convenience, you know?
Okay, I've got the mayor phoned by Councilor Hendricks, phoned by Councilor McCallas.
Yeah, this is a great project, and I know we did discuss a budget, some dollars towards rinking this location, so, we'd love to partner with the community on getting a facility that's used for the community, I'd be fully supportive and behind it. I think it's a great idea, and that's, that's a, that's a good spot for it. Yeah, I just, what are the next steps for you to get this done? I guess is the question.
Well, we're admitting, looking for is a direction to pursue the project, a joint project, is it something that council is interested in doing, put some money aside in the budget, that's all we're on the board at this point, and then some of the details are being thrown on the table, we'll all have to look all that, and we can agree.
Okay, Councilor Hendricks?
Yeah, just, just to throw some history back at this, if somehow, or for some reason I had a piece, I didn't, the right fit, Brack III, which is what Cameron Development's brought to us, absolutely fits right in the green belt, as you first come into, like, in terms of the metal, you know, and gel base, piece fits right in that slot.
You're talking the park?
As you first come into the entrance, you know, being coming to the club, you see that green belt, the green space, that's where Brack III was going to go. I don't know where the arrow's going, the other way.
You mean where it says, where Ken Nichol is written?
Yeah, yeah, that's right. So, that piece in there, yeah, so that, that green piece in there is dimensionally bigger than the Rix.
Yes. Councilor McCallas?
I think I heard about it before.
So, Brack III was going to go in that location.
So, I guess my question for...
And still Mike?
My question for administration would be, obviously, follows behind this, we, we debated this long, a budget, so, I guess the question for administration is the, what's the operational impact for us to bring this on and to run this, considering everything else that we threw at you over the last weekend for recreational facilities?
Yeah, and that's something that we're analyzing now, what they intend to bring about the Ken Nichol.
Okay, Councilor Dowler, and then I think we probably...
Just a brief comment, I didn't expect to finish before, briefly, I'm going to ask a comment, which is, it totally flies that, congratulations on coming to us with an idea that we don't think is a great idea, and coming with some money and to make the project work, it's a great partnership initiative, and it's hard for groups to raise money for things, so you guys did a great job, you know, set some money leaders, and allocate to various things, so it'd be great to have a partnership with Baha and with this facility, I'm all for it, so, I'm sure we all are, by the sounds of comments are on, around the table, so, thanks for coming.
Okay, and then Councilor Stokes, some closing comments, and then one more.
Yeah, sounds good, Phil, this is the same KN RRC outdoor rink that we discussed in budget workshop, right?
Yep, 300K.
With a 300,000 price tag, and I'm, I'm sorry, could you remind me, how much were Baha contributing towards this?
We can contribute up to 300,000.
So, up to half, up to half, a maximum of up to half the estimated cost. Okay, I just wanted to make sure we're all on the same page. No, that's, that's great.
We'd like to just add to that, within that price range of 300,000, we'll put that in people, so the necessary for the, for the summer events as well, so it'll be horse basketball, yes, those kinds of things as well, so we can use it.
The lighting package and all that sort of stuff, yeah?
Yeah. We're down, we're a bit down the pipe from actual design, but, you know, all the elements need to get considered and taken care of, because it really does need to be a multi-use, multi-seasonal facility, you know, because otherwise, it's not going to, it's only going to be one small group instead of four teams, so...
As you mentioned, the proximity to the Zamboni, to indoor rinks, is that, do we require, forgive me, I don't know enough about this, do we require a Zamboni for an outdoor rink? Is that normal?
They, well, they use a tractor, I believe, in town, like, a type of tractor with a Zamboni attachment to it, so, like, I guess the Zamboni type, I guess, tractor with the flooding device.
But in Bellevue one, for instance, does that have a, is that what you're describing?
Yeah, that's, that's what they use, is a tr, it's a tractor.
Okay, so, so that would be, if we were building a new outdoor rink somewhere else, that would need some kind of equipment to, if it's not an actual Zamboni, something that substitutes for a Zamboni is, is normal?
Yes.
Okay. So, I think what we're looking forward to tonight here is just some direction for administration, I think we've achieved that, Councilor Dowler, you had your hands up once more.
So, briefly, you're mentioning potentially our desire would be north-south, which makes sense, so, I'm just asking a quick question from a field perspective, assuming we can build the rink as close to the east side of the Ken Nichol as possible, does that allow for the soccer field to be flipped, north-south to, it'd be smaller, but wouldn't lose potential soccer field? Obviously, Paul might even say, which is a good indication, but I'm not too demographic sides-wise, how much space there is, but we could do that.
I don't know that we need to be in that, we're here tonight, guys, so, I think we're, I think we're at the point where everybody is liking the idea, and really appreciating Baha coming forward, so, looking for someone to move that the, like, many of the whole direct administration to work with Beaumont's Outdoor Hockey Association, and to join partnership, and I'm seeing some moves from Kathy, thank you very much.
Okay, sorry.
Yeah, and so, all in favor? Yeah, thank you. Cool, thanks a lot for coming in, guys.
Looking forward to working with you on this project, it's going to be good.
Thanks, guys. I used to, sorry, I was just curious, we would be losing a field, which, but then that benefits, well, exactly the same, Baha can, I always have that, to be honest.
So, I'm just going to take a pause for a second here, and acknowledge that I did miss asking for a motion to accept the agenda as presented, so looking for motion to ask a committee member to move, so move, thank you.
Thank you.
All in favor? Thank you. At this point, we'd like to invite administration forward to talk about the committee of the whole committee review. Thank you.
I'm here tonight to discuss the committee review, committee of the whole review. There has been quite a few questions regarding the process and the procedures of the committee of the whole, so tonight, I'm just going to provide a little bit further clarification. I have some attachments of a briefing note that was sent out to council as per the resolution that council had made at the December 18th, 2019 council meeting. I'd also like to make mention of the revised memo that has been included in the agenda package to help further clarify what direction committee members can take. Administration has conducted research of similar council committees, and committees including the city of Meduke, city of Spurs Grove, city of Chestamere, Fort Saskatchewan, town of Cochrane, and Strathcona County, and Parkland County. I've included those in the attachment too. A little bit of background with regards to the committee of the whole. Formerly, we had GPC, which was developed on December 9th, the 2014 by Terms of Reference. New council of 2017 has since changed the name to Committee of the Whole, but the purpose of it has not changed since then. The key concept of the committee was created to allow members to operate under informal rules, to discuss emerging matters, meet principally as a forum for discussion rather than decision-making arena, enabling members to discuss key items without the requirement of making decisions, focus on, and then also to have a focus on broader and more strategic items. Some of the decision-making processes that the, the committee members can have are holding non-statutory public hearings, receiving delegations, meeting in camera, receiving information administration on emerging items, and discussing and debating policy matters. The Municipal Government Act limits what committee can approve, and does not allow council to delegate its decision-making authority, such as passing by laws or approving budget to a committee, however, committee members can make motions. Currently, right now, within the meeting procedure of bylaw, committee members can receive agenda reports and information, refer matters to administration, make recommendations to council, and move into camera as per closed session. Council under the Municipal Government Act may act by resolution or by bylaw only, as per Section 180 of the MGA. A bylaw or resolution of council is not valid unless it's passed in council, however, I'd like to note that the meeting procedural bylaw and the Municipal Government Act does allow the council members to delegate those certain resolutions to the committee of the whole as outlined in the bylaw. Council has the ability to amend as they deem fit, as long as they're meeting the requirements within the Municipal Government Act. At this time, administration is looking for a direction on how committee members wish to proceed, and I would be happy to answer any questions.
Thank you, thank you for the presentation, and looking to committee members to ask any questions. So, Councilor Hendricks?
Where are you going to go with just the discussions that are sort of, that are coming from the public, that are other discussions where later, so formalized, that they're , that they're processed by, to talk about having at least maybe one, we just have that conversation, that we have one straight, one day, maybe two, and then, so, just finding where is, where is that, and is it not going to fail? And it's not, then how do we get those items on the table? Is it through most emotion, is it through sending emails to our committee? How do we address the items that aren't so specific to these general?
Yeah, good question. I'll add a comment to that, as I was hoping in 2020, we, we had agreed that we were going to use the first Tuesday of the month, as Councilor Hendricks just said, for that type of meeting, and that hasn't come to fruition, I think, as often as we'd like, so, you know, I'm kind of in that wavelength, and I'd like to see how some of the conversations work out there for us, and maybe that creates less of a concern with how the committee of the whole is run, but, any follow-up with Councilor Hendricks?
No, I just, again, it's more like, we're getting so many things coming to us as councillors, but we have no way of channeling, you know, because it should be a conversation amongst us, and it shouldn't just certainly be a conversation we directly commit, it should be a conversation that we direct to council, to see if there's any legs, any thought, any of these ideas, that, you know, can they, can they get, can they get life a little bit of time, this is, this is potentially like issues that we want to look with, you know, and understand the concerns that are hurt from it, and it turns into a workplace. I'm not saying that we do a workplace-type program, I'm just saying we need to get some other conversations out, right?
Thank you. Comments for Ben, or for those who move on to Councilor McCallas?
Go ahead.
Okay.
Sure. Yeah, so, first thanks to the work to pull this all together. Personally, I find this meeting incredibly valuable to, for us to chance to rock, please, I'll get to your question in a second, your comment. A chance for us to, so that we're not spending Tuesday, you know, the second and fourth Tuesdays where we should be making decisions, going back and forth, so I find this really valuable. I like the structure, particularly with the addition of the, you know, the updates that we get regarding the regional initiatives, I think that's, that's excellent. I think that with a little bit of frustration for me creeps in, where we have a really good, robust discussion here, and then we think we're, we're good, and then we bring it back to council the following Tuesday, and we get into that same discussion and debate again, so, personally, I don't see too many issues with this, with the way that is structured right now. I do take your point, Councilor Hendricks, I mean, this was, you know, day one frustration, and we talked about that when we had that gentleman become, and talked about good governance and all that sort of stuff, and we tried to get this up and running. Clearly, the first Tuesday, you know, the first Tuesday of this month was a little bit, was, obviously, I wasn't here, but, you know, if that's something we look forward to, we can do that. The other option is, you know, tacking on a standing agenda item to this meeting, you know, obviously, we're throwing a lot of things at us, but if we're, if we're trying to maximize our... trying to maximize our time, maybe we can spend half an hour, so, I think the problem is this, if we knock off a few of these people's lists, I like a better term for all these comments that we get from the community, we get a chance to bring them forward and say, you know, this project is, people are looking at this, and we can quickly throw it around here, if it's no good, then it kind of goes off. I think the problem where you're experiencing, and I get it, is that keeping these questions, we never get a chance to talk about it, right, so maybe there's a standing item here. And the last point I'll make, the one slight improvement I'll recommend on this, just from a standing agenda perspective, is if we could use this as an opportunity to get an update on the capital projects that we've got going on. I don't know if you've thought about doing that as part of your bi-weekly, the meetings of regular council meetings, this could be a chance to get into that, I'll volley that with you, but I think that's something that we were, we tried to formalize, and we got those really good updates towards the end of the year with regards to the new red center, and so just an ask to try and formalize those capital project updates. So for me, you know, if you're looking for direction here, I think, I think we're good. If council wants to entertain, maybe adding a standing item to talk about those list projects, happy to do that. Wouldn't be my preference as opposed to having another meeting on a Tuesday, but that's just me, so those are my comments when I went through.
Okay, looking for comments from Min.
Thank you. I just wanted to make notion, like make comments with regards to Councilor Hendricks. I just wanted to point out that typically, within the strategic planning process, those items have been placed on parking lots within that process, and that was kind of one way that we were looking at. I haven't really attended those ones, so I'm not sure if that's still happening, where council kind of just puts all of their thoughts and their ideas and stuff on kind of what they're looking at. So, yeah, with regards to notice a motion and getting agenda items, there, in the meeting procedural bylaw, there is in section, section 4.2, agendas for council meetings, there is an opportunity for council members to put items onto that agenda. There's also the opportunity, and I have had councillors contact me, asking, is this a notice of motion, or is this something that I can place on the agenda? And I have gone straight to just placing it on the agenda and whatnot, and doing it that way, or whether or not, if it falls without, outside of your strategic plan, that is typically when it is a notice of motion. With regards to what Councilor Mokoswain was speaking to, when it comes to, you've had all this discussion with regards to an item, and then you bring it to council to make the final approval of it, I have too seen some of that that's gone on, and a suggestion that could be done is it could go on the consent agenda, and then council would still have the opportunity to be able to pull it off the agenda, consent agenda, if something wasn't, if something had happened between the committee of the whole meeting and the council meeting, so that might streamline the process a little bit. If everything is good, and you still want to, we can put it on the consent with the opportunity to still be able to pull it off, so that could be one way of kind of going through that. And then with regards to amending the agenda for standing items, definitely, but with regards to the capital projects, I think I'll let Cao short kind of answer to that.
Sure, if it's okay. Yeah, I'm just gonna continue on with Ms. Winter's line, and it sounds like, at least we've heard from one councillor, and I think even Councilor Hendricks had alluded to it, that this model can work, but there's a piece missing. As far as the capital projects update, that'll come back as part of the quarterly financial statements and reports, so that was our plan, so you will get those updates. There's a couple options here, you've got all the flexibility in the world in this meeting, and we can deliver whatever it is you want to deliver, with the exceptions of the legislative pieces that Ms. Winter talked about. The Tuesday, first Tuesday meeting, if I recall, there was two of those, then the remainder of those were eaten up by emerging issues, and it took us right to the end of the year. If that was a vehicle, it was refreshing to hear, Councilor Hendricks say, we're not looking for a meeting to develop a list, because that is, I'll be frank, that is our fear. We have a strategic plan, we have a budget every year, there's only so much you can do, and our fear is that if you're gonna continue to add on to that, and that's not what I'm hearing, Councilor Hendricks say, I'm hearing him say, I need a place to have these discussions amongst council, so perhaps it's that Tuesday again, or bolting on to this meeting, so I'll throw those out as a couple options.
A few comments, Mayor, please.
Just because of the way it went, with, we had the two meetings, they were good meetings, and then the first Tuesday of the month did get eaten up with emerging issues, I'd be more in favor of bolting on the standing agenda item to here. Just, just to be able to have that kind of discussion, I mean, I think it was alluded to in the information items area, would be a good spot. I would just, I would just ask that at a convention, we don't ambush our fellow council members, bring something up, throw it out beforehand, since that's not fair. As well, if it's something that's really, really important to you, and you really want to get some support, you gotta go. I think we're just gonna have to get used to the idea of notice of motion, and maybe you have a way to go, because that's what, that is the primary mechanism that you have available to us. I know we tried to, tried to avoid it, because very cumbersome, it's not very impolite, it's not very quick, there's a procedure to it, but if, if you really feel strongly about something, I think we need to start getting comfortable with notices of motion and have it on the table. But I would be in favor of those two items, utilizing the notice of motion procedure more, and bolting on a standing item like we need in the whole meeting.
So I was, that the items that I discussed, we don't rise above the notice of motion. We have nothing to be able to ask, and I realize that there's this opportunity to correct a council for certain asks, but it's just more of a general discussion, that seems that I have no whole, no place to go.
And that's, that's the bolt-on that I'm talking about?
Yeah, so, that, I'd be happy with that, you know, my list started to pile up, I brought part of my list to the agenda tree, and it's just asks, the word, this is a word, that I have, or the things that we've discussed, it's a pass, like get a note, you know, it's ready to sound, it doesn't matter, I don't know why, it's going up, and that's where I'm at, I'm letting the mechanism rise above the notice of motion, it's more of a discussion.
Thank you, Councilor Mokoswain.
Yeah, I've said quite a lot, you can go around that.
I was just looking for a clarification, what's, what does the standing agenda item, what's that achieve for us, how does this address, could you describe it, could somebody describe it, possibly?
Yeah.
In my mind, it would be similar to those couple of meetings we had, where we basically came up through, through a bunch of items on the table, and just had a round, a discussion around it. Bear in mind that those are council discussions, if, if we're gonna task a member to do something, we still need four, three votes, and I think that's where it boils down to, is, I think we fixed that piece by fixing the motioning and doing that, but, yeah, so, basically, we had to start, it would be like those, it would be like those two meetings, where you come up with three or gen items, we'd have a quick discussion, and if it went somewhere, it didn't go somewhere, if you wanted, you'd have to go get something for us, four, three, done, and move on with life.
So it's an opportunity for all council members to discuss items that have, you know, that's been addressed.
Yeah, and bear in mind, some of it, we may have to refer back to strategic planning and things like that. I don't foresee this as being a real good mechanism to start piling on work, I see it as a really good mechanism to start planning for the future.
I don't think that's what you're saying, right?
No, no, I want, I want, it's like, you know, for example, Councilor Stunt, and I'm gonna call the airbrush.
The airbrush?
You're, you're. What did you, finally, like, what's the standard? Let's see, I'm getting, I'm gonna get him in his turn, that's where they're at.
Okay.
So that's, that's what I'm.
Councilor Mokoswain?
We also have councillor inquiries to ask, to ask questions like that in council meetings.
We made that specific change.
No, I'd be happy to do that, but then expect that, okay? Well, expect it that way, we have to do that, but I'm supposed to, also, I'm supposed to, because I have to give it to our, our, for like, hours or seven to hours, for it to, so that we can ask some questions prior to coming here. This is where I want to, I just want to ask some.
Would be nice to ask some questions. It's, Mayor?
Can I provide clarification with regards to that?
Sure, let's hear from Min, please.
So the reason councillor inquiries were built in there was for those exact questions, if you're gonna be directing administration to do something, that's more what we're asking where you have to provide as per the meeting procedural bylaw, to put it on the actual agenda as an item to be discussed by council. If it's an inquiry with regards to the Code of Arms, or if it's an inquiry to where is this project at, like, where is the, you know, something that was discussed, that is definitely done through councillor inquiries, and not needed to be done through notice of motion or adding an agenda item through that way.
Okay, councillor Dowdick, and then, Councilor Mokoswain, what's the order of hands, yeah, you can finish that button.
Yeah, okay, finish that button. Yeah, no, providing the question in advance was, was to be a blight isn't a convention to a hollowing, maybe to do it, but if you don't want to provide it, just be aware that your answer might be, we're gonna have to research that and get back to you.
Councilor Dowdick?
Thanks. I kind of understand where you're going with this, is it more sort of, I find communication between councillors sometimes challenging in terms of a time perspective, we're all very busy people, all the full-time jobs, and communicating with each other is sometimes difficult to do. I found the first Tuesday night, when we did do those two meetings, a chance to just throw some ideas on the table, see everybody felt about it, and say if they had some, if they got some legs, it could go somewhere, so I want to almost call it like our own version of a town hall amongst ourselves, if you want to call it that, and are you thinking of that, I'm not misinterpreting what you're suggesting, I see value in that, but it does, one more meeting toward monthly agenda, I realize that, and I know three councillors have small children, and one more bona fide Tuesday meeting every month will have some challenges for some of us. I see a value in sitting down with my fellow councillors and just spitballing ideas and calling it our own mini-town hall and see where things land. That does take time, though, and I get that, so are you suggesting kind of a general discussion type of idea, which I think has some merit to it, or am I misinterpreting some of your?
Yeah, we used to call, we used to call it GMC, no management committee, and you had, you know, you could throw ideas around, it's your fellow councillors, your manager, just, and it was casual, and it wasn't so formal. The formal process is such that it has to be a council meeting, it comes as an agenda item, that's stated as council partners, and that you have to formalize your ask three days prior to, that's not, that's not what I'm trying to get accomplished. In fact, that, you know, that's, that's, that's not where I'm with the conversation, because then you'd have to somehow engage the conversation with your group, you had to send it to a man, and it's not coming back us, you just gave it a formal answer. That's not where I thought it was. So GMC is to be that, it just, just to be sort of casual conversation about ideas, and there's a lot of good ideas that would perfectly happen, but everything we do is so structured here, there is no ability to go outside of that structure at all. The only time you can have a chat with your fellow councillors is during breaks, or this, right, but we don't have anything that law wants to have as an informal chat, so that's, that we use, I always enjoy, because if you just come here, there, what, what conditions are, and if you don't, it's, I think that's.
What I'm saying, like councillor inquiries, if you can time to ask questions if they're quick, but I still think this is a good place to put a bolt on.
Yeah. Just looking for a comment from Min here, quick.
I just want to refer to Councilor Hendricks' comments with regards to the GMC, back regards with regards to those informal things and those discussions that happened back in November of 2014, administration did seek legal advice with regards to the topics that were being discussed in those meetings, and unfortunately, were told that they had to happen in public, and so then that's when the creation of the GPC meeting came out of that, and from GPC into the committee of the whole.
Right, and I have a problem, I have a problem with being in public, and I don't, I just, I, what I do have a problem with is that we have an intent against us, we have more ability to have a conversation, have directions. So we come here, make decisions based on the terms that are given us, and that's it, and I think that there's other stuff going on, and it just doesn't have, doesn't have a place, doesn't have to have a list, it doesn't turn into a work stop, it just turns into a conversation with your fellow councillors, which we're not, we haven't had in two years, so, you know, which, which leads to just sort of this lock, stock, barrel in terms of process, and I say we gotta work up a little bit, we need a little bit more flexible with our conversations.
Yeah, a couple of things, I think we're all saying the same thing, and we want a chance to quickly have a chat, and I think adding a bolt on gives us that opportunity. It's a formal agenda item in here that we'll go through, and if people have things they want to chat about, then great, if we don't, to the mayors that commented about courtesy, yeah, I mean, if you've got things you want to bring up, then I suggest firing them out there, so that people can have a chance to think about them. Definitely the professional courtesy to administration, to let them know what's coming up, or what's gonna be discussed, that we can get the answer, so I don't think we need to talk about anymore, I think we're, we're, we're all prepared, right, we just want an informal, and this is always, this is always a struggle, but I think if we add a bolt on to the agenda, folks bring what you want, notify councillors and administration beforehand on some topics you might want to talk about, give us a chance to think about it, and then we'll proceed there, but I think, you know, we've come a huge way from when I was first here, and I'll talk about the past and different context of the past. The past, for me, has just been our council, I think administration has really opened that up and turned this meeting into something where we can actually dive into it, and the fact that the councillor inquiries are up there. In terms of agenda items, I get that frustration as well, nothing, nothing prevents you from being, or you're gonna pick up the phone, talking to John, saying, hey, John, there's an issue, I think we need to throw this on the agenda, do you mind turning to administration about it, and put it on the agenda, so I think we've got to take some ownership as well for ourselves here, and if a discussion's not happening, then you've got to take some ownership and actually, you know, reach out and get it on there, and I know that's frustrated me a couple of times, and in the background, I'm like, what is it talking about, and then I've gone to John and said, hey, is there a chance to chuck this on, you know, if it is, great, if not, then we move on, right, so some ownership, but I think we're, we're here, we've landed on a solution anyway, and I spoke to, and I don't think we need another meeting, just for the meeting. With all due respect, I don't think it's got anything to do with families, I just think it's a value of time to drag administration out for another nine months and everyone else, so, yeah, I would be, I think we're looking for direction on this, I think we just, we're only changing direction on this meeting, it's just making an agenda matter for council to talk about their ideas, and I'll let you come up with what that might be called, and then, yeah, take some personal ownership, if there are things you want to get out, yeah, check it in the mail, you'll get it.
I would add to that, that, you know, as the, as the section is titled and crafted and placed on the agenda, that there be, you know, some of the intent is communicated, the intent for this section is to do this, 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 and this, and, you know, if the intent doesn't, when, when that is put together, and if the intent doesn't come across to, you know, be able to address some of the issues that Councilor Hendricks is talking about, then perhaps the councillor inquiry section or the notice of motion will be backed up, but I would like to see the, this section at the end allow for the, you know, some of the items that Councilor Hendricks is carrying around with him right now that he wants to get on the table, so just maybe a final comment to Councilor Hendricks, does that seem like it would start to accomplish some of what you were hoping with bringing this conversation up?
Right, I'd say yes, give it a shot, see how it goes.
Sure. Senator.
So my recommendation that I've drafted here for the committee for consideration is that the committee refer the item back to administration to amend item 13, meeting procedural bylaw, and bring it back to council for first reading, and at that time, council can look at that first reading to see whether or not the items that we've put into there for that standing item meet exactly what the council's looking at, being able to do in that committee.
Is there a committee member looking to move that motion, Councilor Mokoswain?
Yeah, just a question, and sorry, 100% of the process, and you've got the engine, and that's why you're here, to keep us out of trouble. What we're doing is adding an agenda item, this has to come back to council for us to review it both, like, I don't think it changes the procedural bylaw, I think we're just adding an agenda item.
Your permission, quick, thanks.
Thank you through to Councilor Mokoswain. So there's parameters in the meeting procedural bylaw, bylaw that allows you to do certain things, and that would be something that would be over and above allowing what you could currently do, so adding an agenda item, because we need to set the parameters around that discussion, because currently, right now, it lists what the committee may do, and that would be one of the new things that you would be able to do.
Yeah, thank you for that guidance, so you were linked to that motion then?
Yeah, maybe we'll have a chat to the red tape committee, but.
Absolutely.
And I 100% appreciate what you do, keep us out of troubles, thank you, but I will move that motion.
Just for clarity, sorry, could you repeat it once more, just for clarity, thank you.
I've left it fairly brief, so then we can just go back, and I can just kind of add it in there, and then at first reading, we can ask clarifying questions, and at second reading, if we need to modify it and change it, then we can do it at that time. But that council committee refer the item back to administration to amend item 13, meeting procedural bylaw, and bring it back to council for first. meeting procedural bylaw, and bring back to council for first reading.
Yeah, okay, thank you for the clarification, Counselor Monkoff, Swain has moved that ball in favor. I think, thank you for the, maybe it comes back for first reading, we can do one, two, three.
This red tape reduction week.
With that, we're looking for a motion to move into closed session, and then we'll take a couple minutes to reset the room, hustle move. Thank you, and we'll take five to reset the room. Thank you. All in favor, thank you.